This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call it Order to Minority Select Board on February 13th at 6:05 PM. We have all three members present here in Town Hall. And we have one visitor, Dennis Lynch. And Dennis, I spoke with you briefly today. And you know, if you want to raise questions or have comments, we can probably handle you first. But then you have another meeting to go to and.
Thank you very much. And just two thoughts. The first which on behalf of the Lake Garfield Working Group, we're interested in finding out if it's possible in terms of the budget to go from a special article to a line item budget this budget season, so to speak.
And this is specifically for the milk box control?
Right, the dash, to pay the dash. And the Friends like Garfield do contribute a portion of their funding to help pay for the dashes.
What, how much does that usually amount?
I think last year it was 50,000.
And they, that Friends like Garfield?
The town appropriated.
Right, but what was the contribution?
I think it was about 15,000 that they added to that.
So the total cost was like 65,000.
Right. But I, you know, I think if those same figures would work, if possible this year.
Have you seen the budget?
I'm here to ask the question.
No, I know, but I'm asking if you've seen the budget.
No, I haven't.
Have a look. Nine, we've run nine percent overlay.
Yeah.
I've seen it, it was nice and comfy, right?
Eight point nine, I thought, the last time. I've got one here.
Um, Dennis?
Eight point nine eight, I'm calling that nine. Sorry.
So I've been, over the years, part of this discussion as both a select board member and attending Lake Garfield Working Group meetings. And I, I think it's definitely a valid point because it's a expense that is recurring at this point, we believe to be right around eight years.
About eight years.
About eight years. So usually if we have recurring expense like that, we will put it in the operating budget. I think, as we discussed briefly on the phone, we could raise through tax money, a special article, just like we could put free cash against the operating budget. But in general, most of the operating budget we're paying for taxes and most of the special articles we're paying for free cash. So if we do have the free cash available, it might just be cleaner this year to continue on as a special article. I think one of the other reasons that we continue to on as a special article is because there have been discussions over the years about making Lake Garfield tax district, which I think the Lake Garfield Working Group was in support of as recently as last year, if not two years ago.
Yes, I think that was the case, yes.
And it's a daunting task and you need to get approval from both town meeting and then the tax district itself. So I don't know that it will ever happen. But one of the reasons of holding off on putting it in the operating budget was on that basis that it could be, it could become a tax district unto itself. I think that there's some pretty convincing reasons to make it a tax district. There's good for and against reasons. But because certainly everyone can benefit from the lake and the lake being healthy. Everyone in town has the opportunity to use the public beach, to launch a boat, to go swimming, to go fishing. You know, and in the same, along those same lines, the people who live right on the lake district generally benefit a little bit more from the lake.
And also are probably more likely to be by their actions or inactions contributing to the education.
Yeah. So there's all of those theoretical discussions. The one that really I think is convincing to me about making a tax district is the fact that we have a Lake Buell tax district, which was for entirely different reasons because that lake spans two towns. But regardless of why it was created, you now have people who are Monterey residents and in the Lake Buell tax district who pay for the Lake Buell weed mitigation. And now they're also paying for Lake Garfield weed mitigation. And Monterey residents as a whole don't pay for Lake Buell weed mitigation despite the fact that they can launch their boat there, they can go swimming in Lake Buell, there's not the St. Paulic Beach. But that to me, I think is a good reason to explore the district. That being said, we've been doing it for eight years, maybe it should just be a line item. So there's a lot of kind of factors that play in my mind about why it would or wouldn't be a line item in the budget. But.
It's definitely worth discussing.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Yeah, and you know, the Lake Garfield Working Group is always appreciative of the support from the select board for the special articles over that seven or eight year period. So you know, we appreciate the issue of budget necessity and so we can, you know, whatever the select board decides will work.
Once, somebody remind me what would be required to create the tax district? I forget what the process is. Pardon?
I think on tax district, the town will vote on, but the state has to.
That, well, it's long and complicated and I can't really, I don't have my head fully wrapped around it. Other than that, I know some of the key things are town meeting needs to approve it. Yeah, the state needs to examine it. But we would have town council and have had town council review it. And Friends like Garfield, I think has hired an attorney to review it. So that is hopefully not a large hiccup. The second real potential stopping point is the tax, tax district itself needs to vote to accept itself.
So even. First the town, then the state, then the tax district, or is that not the right order?
I think generally correct. I don't know precisely, but the point being town meeting could approve it. We could have had it legally vetted and whatnot. And then the tax district itself could vote it down. So that is a potential.
Yeah, but you don't get to yes or then no. You can't do it without trying and saying it might fail is not usually a reason to not do it.
Well, and we basically have it teed up for years now because it's been viewed and reviewed over the years. And there's a wording that's pretty generally accepted, would need to be reviewed again.
Does it require hearings?
Um, I don't think so. Um, but.
It probably would require a public hearing.
I would think so. I mean, you've got to watch the infrastructure for collecting it at the town like that.
Well, it's, this, the one good thing that we have going is it is something that is done throughout the state. So like Lake Buell does it. We have an organization in town that does it. And it can be done and we have many Monterey residents who pay into the Lake Buell tax district or who have been involved in running it over the years. And I know, I think Kyle is involved.
Yes.
In the Lake Buell one?
Yes.
And managing it.
And she's also a member of the Lake Garfield Working Group.
Yeah. So it's not, we're not doing something that's never been done. It's, if anything, really the challenge is political.
Right.
Not logistically.
There's a process.
So all that being said, what we have now, Dennis, is we have the Lake Garfield weed mitigation down for 50,000 as a special article, obviously, which is kind of just what it was last year.
Well, thank you for that.
Well, that's what's for now. We haven't met with the finance committee yet.
I'd be glad to come back and say the same thing.
Prefer to send your own.
So. But you know, it is worth considering, should it be a line item? It is worth considering.
Okay, the second item was more of a offering assistance. And I guess the request would be to enable me to work with Melissa to look at the Green Communities application once more to find a way to move that forward so that could go successfully to the state and be accepted by the state. There were additional energy efficiency requirements that needed to be vetted. So it would be investigating what else could be done on the energy conservation side to help move that application. And the benefit of doing that is similar to the Community Preservation Act where once a town or municipality is part of it, becomes certified or registered as a member, money comes back from the state for various projects. And it's not a competitive thing, you get money if you're a Green Community. So similar to the CPA, you get money. So it's just a request to be able to work with Melissa about that.
I'm in favor of it. I forget what transpired over the last couple of years where we kind of dropped it. But I'm sure you can work to figure that out and figure out if it's what's going on.
Sure. Yeah, and, and you know, with respect to the budgetary issues facing the town, it's always good to look for other ways to, you know, provide funds for various projects.
No, no, I think that's more like.
So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for your extensive commitment to trying to help the town get money for all kinds of good things.
Thank you. And.
Extensive and successful.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that and it's, it's something that I'm Joe doing. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to do it. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dennis.
So we will get back into business as usual. First item is junior firefighter Ian Tryon. So I would move to appoint Ian Tryon as a junior firefighter. So through his 18th birthday. Requirement for junior firefighter.
Where you miss firefighters, we both seconded it, it doesn't matter.
We'll vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval for Ian. And then there's two firefighter appointments, which are indefinite appointments. Alec Morrison and Seamus Garrity.
Do you know, um, do you know anything about them or are they Monterey residents or are they from elsewhere? Not that it matters, I'm just curious.
I think they're both involved in Sandsville Fire Department. And they are going to probably mostly be involved in the shift program. And I think at least one of them lives in Sandsville, if not both. And I think they're both involved in Sandsville Fire Department. And that's how the connection was made. So I move to make appoint Alec Morrison and Seamus Garrity as firefighters with indefinite appointment, appointment. Is there any other discussion on that? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval. The next item is the grant, the ADA grant contract between the town and VRPC. Deliverables, draft copy of self evaluation and transition plan, review of draft plan with advisory committee, digital copy of a final self evaluation and transition plan, presentation of final plan to the town in an advertised and posted public setting.
So just, what context do you think this? Resource inventory, so is this is to make sure that we're in compliance with state rules concerning ADA?
I believe so. Melissa, I don't know if you want to speak to this briefly, but.
Give me one second, I'll find the email here. It is. All right.
How old the ADA self evaluation and transition plan? What are we transitioning from and to?
So this grant is, excuse me, helps the town prepare an ADA self evaluation of town properties. It's identified as a need because the open space and recreation plan is required to attach a self evaluation as an appendix to the plan. That's it, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
So what's that, Melissa?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I move that we would accept the agreement between the town and VRPC. Second, is there any other discussion? We'll call a vote.
How, how much will this cost and where are we getting the money?
Um, it's coming from the grant and the award up to $30,000.
Okay. The same grant for the OSRP?
No, separate.
Okay. Great, okay, thank you.
So we'll call a vote on the agreement.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, that's unanimous approval. The next item, the animal inspector disclosure financial interest is John Nikoff, who happens to be my uncle for the sake of transparency. He also told me that he's not seeking this disclosure anymore because he talked to the state and they just said that he's not going to participate in any of these inspections if he has a.
If it's on the property, if he has a lot.
If he has a financial interest. So I think he, we don't need to do this.
So my only question is, do we have an alternate inspector to do those inspections? We do.
Well, there's another animal inspector, Cassie Keely.
Okay. Okay.
I believe that was the plan, just to have her do it.
Okay.
I'm not sure we could, well, if there's any follow up that needs to be done on that. But I think word of health appoint animal inspector, so that's kind of out of our realm a little bit.
Well.
But I think that was.
Just me making sure we have someone to do it. And I don't think he would have like stepped back unless he had an alternate, but I wonder who it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cassie Keely, definitely. So we're not gonna.
We're not.
We're.
Okay.
Any questions on the law enforcement mutual aid agreement?
Not really. Straight forward.
Okay. Motion to accept the Berkshire County Law Enforcement Council Mutual Aid Agreement.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on it?
Just want to say I find it, I don't know. I love the fact that Article 4 is titled command and control, which completely makes sense, but.
They have to.
I know. Absolutely. Yep, anyway.
All right, we'll call a vote on motion.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimous approval. Um, I did send last minute a few edits to the letter to Southern Berkshire Ambulance. Add a couple. I just wanted. I just want to be. I think my tendency is to be.
Was I not? Where was I not?
I think I did. I don't know, just because she's matter of fact.
Yeah, I made a couple really pretty minor changes.
So I will read the changes as written. So hey, I'll just read the letter because it's not very long. The Monterey Select Board thanks you for getting us our proposed assessment last November as we progress through our town budget cycle. We find ourselves concerned about the 36% requested increase in Monterey's contribution to SBA. Monterey seeing the cost of ambulance service rise from a $5,000 contribution in 2020 and 2021 to 51,670 in 2023 and now to 7122. We value your service to our town. We want to continue to financially support SBA, but we hope that the SBA recognizes that annual 36% increases are not sustainable for a small town trying our best to make our budget manageable for taxpayers. We are very cognizant of the treacherous financial situation of ambulance companies nationwide, as well as the difficulty of maintaining adequate staffing. And we know that reimbursement rates are critical to keeping the ambulance company on sound financial footing. As we understand it, the contributions to the town are to cover the operating costs which are not funded by paid and reimbursed calls. We therefore have a direct interest in how SBA is pursuing maximizing its reimbursement rate. We'd like to hear from your board regarding a number of financial factors, including current rate of claims for which you receive any reimbursement, average reimbursement incurred for call, concrete plans regarding reimbursement rates in this and future fiscal years. It just occurred to me that the thing we don't ask here is about paid calls that aren't reimbursement calls. Because like I think, I think when they are asked to do a transport, that's not a reimbursed call, that's a paid call. Do we want to ask for that as well?
Yeah, I'm not familiar, but if you, that's a difference, yeah. Basically, we want to make it financially viable. We know ambulances are struggling, but we have to come up with a plan that's reliable and sustainable for the town. Which would involve them trying to get some money from the people that use them.
And of course, we welcome any other relevant information you or the board can provide regarding the financial future of SBA. Looking forward to hearing from you soon, we'll be happy if we need to discuss this further. Also, I spoke with Joe, which I think happened since then. And one interesting little fact that he shared with me, part of the issue.
He is the treasurer.
Or he is the treasurer, he's on the board, he's the treasurer. So part of the issue that they encounter is the Massachusetts regulated maximum amounts of reimbursement. So for example, if it's covered by veterans benefits, a maximum amount that they can be reimbursed is $200. And that's true whether the call is a five minute call or still $200. Doesn't matter where they take them, doesn't matter what transpires, doesn't matter what's get used off the truck, $200. So that's not their fault.
Right.
And I don't, I could think at this point, everybody's starting to realize how problematic this whole situation is and how many ambulance companies and how severely ambulance services are being affected. So the question then becomes, if, if part of the significant issue is the rate of, the amount they're allowed to be maximally reimbursed. So one is veterans, the other one is Medicare, Medicare and Medicaid. Also has a very, it's not 200, I think it's a little more, but it's, it's still well below. When I had to transport from an angle, it was over $2,000. And obviously not all calls are that. But he also mentioned, for example, that the rates are based on transit times for urban areas. Remember when I was talking about how you can make a rule that's simple and easy to enforce, but doesn't really work? Example, right? You set the rates based on transit times in urban areas, doesn't work outside of urban areas. You're going to have people that are strapped. Because we're not tentative to the cost. So basically, you know, one issue would be, is there anything we can do to work with whoever the state rep and state senators are to try and push for changes to Massachusetts based reimbursement rates? Second issue would be that I did raise the issue of how the allocations are being made based solely on the tax base. And his response was, well, if you would like to like get agreement from all of the towns, we would be perfectly willing to, once you all came to a decision about what that scheme would be allocating the funds, be willing to put it into play. But that basically puts the burden on us to, to get Biden from all the towns. And he, he used the word all, which is. It's Mount Washington, is that, I think it's six, is that six? Monterey, Edgemont, Sheffield, Alford, Barrington.
And the way that we had it drawn up last year didn't, mixing in call volume with assessment basically benefit every town other than Barrington? So that, I mean, that's, the question could basically get the support of everyone other than Rick Barrington.
But Barrington's got the biggest single piece of it and I think they were the maker brick. The only difference is this year, they no longer, according to our partner chief, Barrington doesn't now have an ambulance.
But it does though?
No. So like they're, the, you know, the card they were holding was, if you make us pay more, we'll do our own ambulance. But it's a lot harder to play that card when you don't have one ambulance.
I think it should be a few years' average of call volume.
Which is fair.
Balanced with the value of the town. But I don't know if that's something you'd be willing to draw, but we would, could basically, based on the numbers that we ran last year, get one support other than Barrington. It's really, I, in my opinion, it's the fair way to do it.
God, I'm, I'm not going to dispute that and I'm willing to try and draw something up and bring a letter that we would send to the other, to all the towns.
I think the other question really is though, is to Southern Berkshire, and this is what the letter gets at is the whole pie that they're asking for is possibly too big. Because keep in mind, all those years where they essentially got nothing or very insignificant amounts from all the towns, they got very behind in paying their bills and whatnot, and we don't want that, but they made it with almost nothing. And yes, things have changed.
But weren't they volunteer?
That has changed in years.
Okay.
So they were, they're changing their name because, but for years, daytime staff have been paid. I don't, I'm not going to say this is as a, as a fact, but generally I think daytime staff were paid, nighttime were volunteered. And that's been going on, maybe now nighttime they're paid too, but it hasn't been really volunteer.
For longer than.
And there's always a question, what is volunteer? Because you know, usually there's sometimes like. So that being said, I mean, my sense is that they don't need all the money that they're asking for. And that seems like the easier thing to go after.
What would be the, like, are we asking to see their operating budget?
Well, what?
Breakdown?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, why do they need, you know, from a couple of years ago, hardly getting anything from any town?
Well, they gave us a financial statement at the end of last year.
I was just going to say, we do have a financial statement. The question is, is there enough breakdown on it?
I think it was pretty detailed. It talked about labor and stuff like that and.
The end of last year, what, uh, I mean, in.
Maybe May or something like that.
Okay.
I, I either put in there, can you know, point out that they shared their financials with us last year. Is there an update on your financials?
Well, we didn't get an audit, but the audit is a couple of years behind, right?
Uh, I don't know.
I don't know if we're talking about two different things.
Yeah. But even if.
So and the most, and your most current operating budget?
They're, they're, they're non-profit. Well, they're, they're, they're non-profit, right?
Yeah.
So, they, they have to be able to give you, at the very minimum, their tax.
Right. But what I'd like to ask for is beyond the tax form. The tax form is in the past. What I want to see is the budget they're basing this request on.
Well, the question is.
The itemized budget upon which this request is based.
Do they go from, is it a July to June budget, or is it a calendar year?
I think, I don't know, but I think that is the question, Susan, is we just want to see, even if it's not real, just where is this number coming from?
Well, yeah, but how, how are they doing versus?
Well, that too, but I even wanted to just see where did you come up with the total?
That's whatever. The itemized budget upon which this request is based.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's perfect, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I'm just curious.
I, I'm not gonna disagree with you. I, I agree.
Well, unless you ask for it, you're not gonna know.
Right? I mean, and.
There is the, it's gotta be some transparency, so they should, they should be sharing what happened.
Meanwhile, like, you know, we asked to be on the board and they said no. And I get they don't want their board to be unreal, but.
Well, and I was gonna be a member from each town, but what if we just go Monterey? The other towns don't, didn't take us.
Well, they're, yeah, they're, they're not on the, you know, we're doing all the steps, so we're gonna use our eyes, we're paying.
Yeah, we're paying. Did you, did you figure it was a thousand a call?
Approximately. And, and the thing that bothers me the most is that Sheffield, who has like.
Their year time.
Almost four times the call volume, and three times the population is paying like ten percent more than them. So.
And they're not, they're, that's a traveling, that's a little the distance that it's on like.
There are proct, I'm gonna say there are approximately equidistant in terms of travel times from Barrington to, to them and back. It's pretty close. Depends where in Sheffield and where in Monterey.
North border.
Yeah. I mean, you know, it's, it depends where you are in each, but there are places that are closer here and closer there, and places that are further here and further there, so. But, you know, ten percent more when you have four times the call volume and three times the population and two and a half times the budget. I know. So, okay. So, I will forward, uh, do we want to send this letter as edited?
Yes.
Okay. I will forward the letter to Melissa, put on Town Letterhead and.
Yeah, turn it around and put it in the mailbox.
And by the way, I went on the phone, I did ask Joe to send us some of that, whatever numbers he could pull together. So, he has, you know, that's already been raised. Okay. And I just volunteered to try to draft something that would be a different assessment scheme, right?
Yeah, and I don't know how you want to go about this because that is a trick, because there's gonna be winners and losers. And Southern Berkshire has no interest in.
Yeah, they don't want to mediate that.
Mediating it. So, that, if you don't want to put a lot of time and energy into that, I wouldn't blame you, but, you know, that would be one way to, to alleviate this burden that we're facing. And I think the other way is just, let's get down to the bottom of how Southern Berkshire is functioning. Uh, because we can't do thirty-six percent every year, it's just not gonna work.
No. And I guess the only other question is, like, what would we need to try to take on lobbying for changes in Boston? I mean, we're not gonna get relief from that next year.
Well, I think at the very least, I mean, everyone, I think, is aware of the ongoing issues, but if you talk to a state, uh, anyone in state government, you can mention it. And I think that they should be, you know, hopefully it's not the first time they're hearing about it, but let them kind of know our situation and think something needs to change. Because this is not working out.
Yeah, okay, so. Um. Okay, so I will, I will do that, and what I'll probably do is make calls to them, but I may also draft a letter for the select board, from the select board to those people.
Yeah.
To then back up with that conversation. Okay.
Act, I mean, have it come from all of the towns that are served by Southern Berkshire, you know?
Well, since we're gonna draft a letter to them, I'll, I'll draft it and attach it and say, would you be willing to sign on to this letter?
I think only because, uh, you know, now probably no one is thrilled by increases, even if we feel like we're getting short ends.
No, and I think.
I don't think it's an interesting question, what are the others' increases? The others' increase in about fifty-six percent?
Everyone's got the same thirty-six percent increase. It's less than trying to write your song.
Well, I know.
It's about the only positive thing you can say, right?
Plus a headache.
Also true.
If already counts good, it wouldn't be able to find the staff because they wanted to run it, find the staff and do what they need.
All right, so we will sign that once it gets printed up. Thank you for being on top of it, Susan. Appreciate it.
No problem. I'm actually sending it to Melissa at the.
Melissa, do you have any additional town administrator items?
No. Susan, if you're sending me that now, I can print it off for you guys to sign.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So, we're not having a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, uh, just because the Finance Committee didn't get to post the meeting properly. So.
That makes our meeting short.
Um, it does, and we could be really short, and I'm not opposed to that, and then the other thing that we could do is we could talk a little bit about it. Um, I'm not opposed to being really short.
Well, the, we're not meeting with Monterey Fire Group this week. We did meet last Wednesday. Uh, they have asked, you know, about doing a loan for their work. Town Council has recommended against that. Um, the Town Council will put it in writing. I had a conversation with them last Friday. You know, there's the, so, we have not zeroed in on what the lease payment would be. You know, so there's, there's a training, training number they're requesting for doing training. But then I felt should fall under the fire department, not the Monterey Fire Company. I don't remember the exact number, so those are the, those are the big ticket items, and then there's their compensation and the city stuff.
If it falls under, into the department instead of the company, how does it, I mean, just moves from one line up to another?
Yeah, I just wanted to have a, under that one line.
Doesn't go away?
Doesn't, yeah, no. You're gonna pay through the lease payment of the forty hundred dollars, but it's a, it's strange for us, yeah.
Yeah, fair. Like, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the flow of the money.
And so the, the other issue is the compensation.
So, and then, while we're talking about kind of special articles, I hope everyone does think about what kind of stories. Um, and just that whole issue of how to refund millifoil mitigation in Lake Garfield. We've been doing it in the special article. Sometimes the select board and the Finance Committee supported it, sometimes it was put on as a citizen's petition.
Wasn't that the original way it got to the budget? Was it a citizen's petition?
I don't know the whole history, but it's.
First few years, yeah, that's a lot back.
It's done different things. One year, it was on the warrant, not as a citizen petition, but the select board and the Finance Committee didn't approve of it, which was really interesting, because usually the Finance Committee and the select board don't approve of it, it's just not on the warrant.
Could have gotten approved.
At town meeting. It's always gotten approved at town meeting.
Yeah, but they're a very vocal group. I know, you know, Adam lives behind me, he, you know, that's why he registers to vote now. I care because that's.
Just so you know, you should be registering to vote based on where you live.
Well, he does.
Not based on where you want to vote.
Uh, he's, he's spending a six months, seven months.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, if you spend like half the, at one place and half the other, you can make that call.
Yeah, I still, I think it's, don't quote on this, but I still think it's just basically supposed to be on where you live, where you rest your head.
Yeah.
But you can also choose to rest your head more, what might say the other, on the basis of where you wanna.
You can do that.
Participate.
But if you're in Monterey a hundred days a year.
Or a year, so, yeah.
Um, so, that being.
That's zero profit, or zero income test?
That being said.
Property tax.
Yeah, that's property.
We won't do budgets, but I'm gonna go run to the printer and get the minutes and the.
Fair. I mean, I don't think that they're wrong to have to prove something, but sometimes it's hard to prove it. How do you prove where you?
You know, I know people that actually, they save their receipts from stores. For, they, they go, according to my brothers living in Florida for fifty years now. And they, they know where all the high-end zip codes are, and that's who the people that go after.
I mean, on the other hand, like, I know plenty of people who actually live somewhere and only have one home, live there and shop on weekends. Because that's when they're not working.
Yeah.
But you could be a weekender, or you could be a.
They just went up from the state.
Right, from the state, right.
You know, it's like you went to the grocery.
Right, but if, what if you worked, what if you live in New York and here, that's two different states?
Yeah.
But if you were shopping at Guido's on the weekend, I actually know people who live in New York and shop at Guido's to take the food home. Because it's easier and cheaper for them to shop at Guido's.
Anything's cheaper. Have you shopped, grocery shopped in New York City recently? I was up there with my daughter.
That is.
Oh, my God.
I know. And a lot of people don't wanna have to get.
Mayonnaise was like ten bucks.
Just getting there can be a, like, it used to be you could shop right down the street from you when I grew up there. Right, but not anymore. Right? Like, people where my, where my, my brother left there, like, probably ten years ago now, but even at that point, he was out, he was driving up to Fairway to go shopping, and it was like, it was a bit of a drive and not all that convenient, but there was nothing left close by where, that had decent food, never mind decent prices. It's just all of the smaller stores were gone.
Did you see the article in Berkshire Eagle, one of the most expensive, expensive houses that sold in, uh, in New Marlborough, like ten million dollars or something?
I missed that.
Wow. The woman said she, one of the reasons she bought it because of Guido's.
Uh, Melissa, the, uh, thank you for printing everything out. For some reason, the CO on the letter came out kind of cropped.
Like it didn't print completely?
I don't know if I can show it to you, but it came out, like, two of the edges are cut off. So I don't know if we want to retry that. I don't know if it was a printer malfunction or.
Okay.
Thank you. So we're starting with January thirtieth.
Okay, I'm just trying to track this. So who's red and who's?
I'm red.
You're red.
Whoa, red.
Are you blue or?
Kind of orange, I don't know.
No colorblind. Are you?
I don't know.
There's a purple or blue.
A purple. Purple, blue and orange.
Yeah.
So I would say that I'm blue.
Cause I know I also.
I bet.
Which one are you looking at? One thirty?
One thirty.
Yeah, the, the first changes with the like parentheses and stuff, it's blue on my screen. I don't know how it came out for you. That's Justin. The next set of changes in D, which is orange for me, is, um, hang on. That's Frank.
So, and who is Justin? So, okay, and purple is, okay.
Yep.
So, do we want to be quoting large passages for people, or just, I mean, typically minutes just?
Well, let's take a look, because I think there's, everyone commented on, on this fire truck thing.
Yeah, we're looking at D.
So let's take a look.
That's just Frank.
Well, no, it's all the same. It's not really split up into D and E. It just, it's, that's all about fire truck replacement.
Oh, okay.
That's kind of, so, everyone commented, let's see what's going on. Sean has been notified that on February first, all truck prices are going four and a half percent. The increase would add approximately fifty K in additional costs. Sean said the fire company equipment salesperson is looking for an update on where the town's at, whether you're considering doing the truck or not. They understand you can't lock in, but they would like a nod, you're considering it, or absolutely not. I heard that the company is offering to keep the lower price, which was quoted in December if the town intends to purchase the truck.
That works for me. I don't have that. Oh, I see, it's down here. It just got under E, right? So, then it's shorter and like, I'm with shorter. Are you okay with that, Frank?
Yeah. So, how it would read is the truck prices are about four and a half percent. The increase would add approximately fifty K in additional costs. The company is offering to keep the lower price, which was quoted in December if the town intended to purchase the truck. Um, and then, the time between ordering and receiving a new truck is currently twenty-four to forty-eight months.
It's twenty, I think.
Is it twenty?
Yeah, I listened to the video.
For some reason, I thought it was forty-eight.
No, twenty-eight, it's a little over two years, it wasn't, yeah.
Now, I just made that very minor change, just because as I understand it, the build only takes so long, but this, that twenty-four to twenty-eight is other things than just the build, you know, preparing and whatnot, so. That's just, you order it, you get it this. Sean and the select board reviewed the drawing of the proposed truck, and he explained the changes from the proposed truck to the truck they currently use.
Might be the other way, from the truck they currently use to the truck, their proposed truck? Yeah.
And.
So where do we want to put for the lesson?
Um, yeah, that is also, so, I guess everyone changed, so we got all messy, but, um, the select board unanimously, I think that that is what happened. Agreed.
I, I think to put this, put that, that amount on this as a special article.
If you go back and you watch the video, we don't talk about putting on a special article.
We just talked about what?
Well, I think part of the agreement was to, we say.
You're not sure that, but we, we not, we never commit to whether it's borrowing or anything else.
No, but we, well, well, I walked away, we gave them the nod to go ahead and tell them, yes, we're serious about it.
Right.
We're serious about it.
And, you know, the quotes in there, the, you know, the, if you go back, I watched the video today on what Sean said. We didn't say there to be put on the, this warrant, any warrant this time. We took the information. Thank you for showing, yes, tell them, basically, yeah.
I think part of the reason too, it's coming back to me, I didn't remember this when I was reviewing the minutes myself, but part of the reason too, to say, yeah, we're serious about it, is A, we are serious about it, but B, you say we're serious about it and you have nothing to lose.
Right.
Because if we had.
We're not committed to anything, yeah.
That's why, you know, the, you know, that's the, get to go by the quotes, that's why I wrote the comment.
Do we want to just delete that lesson?
Well, I think there should be something that the select board.
You unanimously agreed to, uh.
Well, they acknowledged what the price for the new truck would be, and you know, and that we, you know, we asked, there was no financial commitment, that was said in the meeting. Yes, we're seriously looking at this, we want you to hold the price for it.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it was, you know, we're serious about it.
The, the select board, uh, directed Sean to tell the sales company that the town is seriously considering the truck.
That's a good way to put it.
To hold the price.
Right, it's very simple.
I'll let you.
Well, I'm gonna have to remember it.
The select board unanimously directed Sean to tell the sales company. The select board unanimously directed Sean to tell the sales company to hold the price.
Hold the price, and that we're seriously considering it.
Correct.
And I, we're, you know.
Yes, this probably deserves some attention, so-
The only problem I've got at the moment is all the way down on the end of town, is there salary?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, part of that's me, but you're welcome.
I'm sure other people have got me, but that's- Justin was opposed to placing an article in the special town meeting warrant for the town administrator's salary, because if there were to be any increase to this line as a result of recruitment and contract negotiations, this potential increase would not be known until after the special town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Justin said that the board has already acknowledged the possibility of using reserve fund transfer to cover any minor increases in this line for the current fiscal year, and asking annual town meeting for any significant long-term increases to the one item.
So what, I'm not sure-
I think it was based on-
Yeah, it must have based on, it was on his sentence.
It was based on, yeah, things that were added, so-
Okay, that works.
If we, is everyone-
Longer, you should line on just the rest of that gets deleted, right?
Yeah.
Unless maybe Anne Frank incurred, or, Justin said that for, okay, Anne Frank incurred, but you can, you can leave it out, that's fine.
Oh.
Uh, I wanna make sure.
So, I think Susan, you and I both tackled this one too.
Yep, okay.
And, I'm just gonna read mine off, and then, I don't know if that kinda covers your concerns.
Yeah, go.
After the board approved the composite evaluation November, Melissa sent a response to the composite evaluation December, and the board had responded to Melissa's comments. After inquiring in January, Justin learned that nothing had been placed in Melissa's personnel file. Justin sold the town council an issue and reported back with her advice. The board agreed that the following will be placed in Melissa's personnel file, the composite evaluation is approved by the board, the individual evaluation, evaluations completed by each board member, Melissa's responses to everyone's evaluations and Justin's response to Melissa's.
That works.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, I went back and just copied that email. Oh. Here's another one, uh, Susan suggested approving them without the transcript. And then I just got removing the word draft, I mean, it's really approving.
So how does it end in reading, that's the problem, without the transcript?
I think what it should really say is amending, approving, suggested approving.
Or sugge, Susan suggested-
Amending.
Amending the, amending them by deleting the transcript and removing the word draft, but it turns out it needs redaction, so, right?
Well, amending, no, but it's important too, because, uh, Susan's just amending them by, well, that's not really, cause I actually suggested deleting the transcript.
Yeah, we both did.
Yeah.
Like, I, I'm totally fine with that, I just wanna make sure that
Susan-
Or you could say, and Justin can-
Yeah, it seems, it only seems disingenuous, cause I already drafted up a thing, so-
Right.
Susan and Justin suggested-
That works.
Um, amending them by deleting the-
Incomprehensible transcript. I think you should put transcript in quotes.
I was going to.
Because that is just the worst possible.
And approving the amended version.
Right.
And it gets down later in the paragraph to what exactly that all means, but the next sentence would be council suggested that sections could be redacted to keep out from en- information, which the public released that may constitute unwarranted invasion of an employee's personal privacy. That, that, uh-
Which, that, that's confusing.
I know, it's not great.
Uh, council suggested that sections could be redacted, uh, to prevent invasion of employees' privacy, releasing confidential information.
Invasion was just to protect.
To protect, just to protect confidential information, just makes it shorter and to the point.
Could be redacted to protect-
Confidential information.
Period.
Yep. Yeah, and I agree, just redacting would be the most reasonable way. I'd ask council to help with redacting, that works.
Tell them to.
I, you know that I'm now on page twenty-five of the employment manual?
That's great.
Oh. Uh, I know I'm interrupting this, but I don't wanna forget that, uh, I did hear back from Mary.
Mm-hmm.
I forwarded to you her response.
Yep.
Uh, I did forward her the current version of the manual, and I, myself, and people having along with you there.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Oh my God, I am going to motion that we approve the minutes of one thirty twenty-four as amended.
Second, any other discussion, call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, unanimous approval.
Two, two.
Um, two, six, so it's gonna be Did you, did you hear this one?
No.
You can't tell on this.
I understand.
Do you need the colors on that one too?
I, I think we're okay, it's not as common, there's not as many added, so.
Well, I just, it said may or not.
(laughing)
Oh, I can, like, I'm a may or-
May to may or may or not, yeah. Uh, and like, you know, start on the printout book thing may end up being completely different because of Mary's point about it really typically is the town administrator, and the, the sensible thing to do would be to just have a section at the beginning that alters it, and that can be put in or taken out without having to change the whole thing, but I'm gonna let them suggest having it.
Okay, that's um, so the, the two questions-
It should read agree, not agree, on the seven A, at the end, last sentence there.
Uh, yep. Agree. That's a good change, agree.
Um, and I, I just thought the grant sources should be in, in the eight, but I didn't know what they were, so.
So, Melissa, was a handicap picnic table for Maya?
Yes.
And then, do you have, off the top of your head, the name of the fire department grant?
Yes, so is the firefighter safety grant.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the February sixth minutes as amended.
Second.
Is there any other discussion, call a vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
(laughing) Running competition for second first.
Uh, there's, that's me. So, I think the plan is, uh, the, the finance committee next week.
Okay.
I have expected one or more of them to show up today.
Do we have any meetings besides that for next week, Melissa?
Nope, you don't have anything on the agenda right now.
Are we still waiting for David Eisenfeld of Unibank to get back?
Uh, no, that's one of the things I wanna talk to you about tomorrow.
Okay. So he has gotten back to us? No, he hasn't done.
No, he has, but I think you guys are being premature from my conversations with the treasurer, so I just wanna give you what I have, and you really don't need to meet with him until September.
Because for this year, you need to just pay what we already-
Right, and any future numbers he's gonna give you is gonna depend on how much extra you put on this town meeting warrant.
But that's what, that's what we need to figure out.
That's what we need to know. Right, the whole point, the reason we want those numbers is so that we can decide how much we should put to pay down capital on this warrant.
Well, anyways, I'll-
Yeah.
I'll talk with Melissa.
Okay.
Uh,
That's fine.
And figure it out, um, and-
I mean, ultimately, it seems to me like we can make, we can make that decision. We know it renews in the fall, so that's this fiscal, that, the fiscal year that's gonna be on the warrant. So I don't see why we can't just make a decision about how much we can afford to put towards principles, so that when it renews, we have a debate.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think there's the larger questions about what kind of borrowing.
Right, so that all depends on how much you guys put down extra this year, and then he can forecast it out, right now, he's just forecasting it out with the numbers, the minimum payments.
Well, I guess what would be helpful, Melissa, just as we consider this and the finance committee considers this, whether it's you, or Sarah, or someone else to prepare, but, um, and maybe the NPL sheet is enough, but just a summary of what are our remaining principles. Um, I think if we get that rescue vehicle, everything that we've authorized borrowing for will have begun. But if there's anything that we've authorized borrowing for that hasn't begun, uh, and then, that would just help, and then, things coming down the pipeline, which is just the capital plan. But those are the kinds of things I feel like I need to help make a decision on what we wanna put this year.
I'll, I'll give you what he gave me.
Okay, thanks. Um, any other, anything else before we adjourn?
Do we want to, we had talked about meeting at five thirty this week because of getting business done, but we didn't have the joint meeting. But does that now apply to next week? Do we wanna try to meet at five thirty so that we can get the rest of our business?
I will-
I think so, that could be some other stuff.
Yeah, if we can, if we can, uh, meet at five thirty, and it seems like it will help the meeting move on, we will, I looked at this agenda.
And it wasn't that.
And it seemed like if we may, if we met at five thirty, we might have dead time.
Yeah.
Uh, which short of minutes, we would've. Um, that's why we met at six, but yeah, five thirty can definitely be a, an option.
That, that's fair, I just wanted to raise it, and I think your call was a good one.
And then, you know, it was different than we all expected, okay, uh, is there a motion adjourned?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we'll vote on the motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so, meeting adjourned at seven, ten. Seven, ten, yeah.